PM, it's April's, I'm sorry, April 24th, and this is the meeting of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen. All selectmen are present, including our newly-elected Ed Loud. I'd like to congratulate you and welcome you to the board. And I'd also...
(applause)
Also like to congratulate Mr. McCoy on being re-elected to the board. Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Look forward to working with you both. If I could ask everyone to please stand, and we'll pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your honor, which stands: One nation under God, indivisible, free and just.
We do have Treasury warrants to approve: forty-two, forty-two A, forty-three, and forty-three A. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion, and a second is the discussion. Is there any additional discussion? All in favor? We have four in favor and one abstained. Mr. Loud abstained for having not been a part of those. No minutes to approve here. Our first appointment this evening was an executive session, which we paused at seven o'clock in order to come out and join you. We will reconvene into that executive session at the conclusion of this night, at tonight's meeting. I also wanted to just take a brief moment to recognize that everyone here on the board tonight, as well as Beverly Dalton, are wearing an item of blue in recognition of the fact that April is Autism Awareness Month. And so, it was brought to our attention several years ago by one of our former selectmen, and we have continued that tradition. Hopefully, folks throughout the month of August will pause at least a few moments to give some consideration to the affliction of autism and how it affects individuals within our community. So, I thank you all for doing so. Our seven o'clock appointment is with our very wonderful young folks that are joining us here tonight. We're very privileged and honored to have you here with us tonight. I want to, I guess, call out the coaches here and ask, who's the head coach? Tricia? Oh, okay.
(laughing).
Here's... Here's the names I have. I have Tricia Peter, Matthew Savage, and Carrie White. So, Peter, I think, yes? If you don't mind, Peter, if you want to stand up and just sort of tell us a little bit about your run through the season and how you got to here tonight.
Well, first, well, we're talking about the states, right?
Yes.
Okay. We did win our league, too, so I just wanted to add that. We had our, the preliminary round back in January. We played Melrose, who actually won it all last year. We ended up with help from Macy Savage and Lily McKenzie, beat them two-nothing. So, that got us into the, into the states. Once we got there, we ended up playing, first game was against Charlestown, thank you, who we end up losing to, but it was a game that went into overtime and then into two or three rounds of shootout.
Eleven.
Yeah. Eleven shooters.
(inaudible).
That one?
(inaudible).
Sorry, man.
Thanks for helping me out. After that was Andover, who we soundly beat, six-nothing. Then, then things got interesting. We played Waymouth. That was an overtime game. Two, two to, two to one? Yeah? I have to have the, I have to have the young kids help me remember, because I'm getting a little old here. Then was Arlington. Arlington, which was another overtime game. Two to one. Thanks, Sam. And then, the final, that put us in the finals against Waymouth. Duxbury. Dang! Duxbury.
I should have warned you, we were going to ask you this.
Yeah, I got it, I got it. That one I remember. And that one, actually, we won in regulation time, which is sort of anticlimactic with all the other games, but, yeah, we won two to one in that game. And here we are.
It's awesome. It's awesome. So, just by frame, very, yeah, I'll go with you.
(applause).
To give it context, it's the girls' U-ten, Under Ten State Champions is who was before us tonight. I think I neglected to say that at the beginning. So, what a tremendous accomplishment. What I want to do, if it's okay, is offer the opportunity for members of the board here to chat you up a little bit here, and if it's all right with the board, I'd like to start with Mr. Bendel to the right.
Thank you, Mr. Shampoo, and congratulations to everybody here, girls. Congratulations. I want to congratulate you, first and foremost. A terrific accomplishment. I also want to congratulate the coaches. As a coach myself, I know the time that goes into you guys put in, early, much earlier morning than in the basketball world. I have to admit, I'm not a hockey guy, but I really respect what you guys do. And obviously, the parents invest a lot of time and money and effort and energy to support you guys, and you guys didn't let them down. It's a terrific accomplishment. It's my understanding that it was an overtime championship game? Is that correct?
(inaudible).
No? Going into the...
Three out of one.
So, a couple, three out of the five, okay. It was quite a few, and I heard you had quite a fantastic finish, and some one parent told me that the goalie stood on their head. Is that the term right? Did I use that correctly? I believe Ms. Sanato did a terrific job. And so, I congratulate you all, and as a father of a young girl, when you guys get to high school, hopefully, my daughter will be looking up to you guys when you're playing at the high school level and beyond. So, I wish you the best of luck. Congratulations to all of you.
(applause). I just want to echo my colleagues' comments. Congratulations. There's so much enthusiasm, man. I mean, I see it in your pictures. It's unbelievable. Congratulations on what you did and how you represented the town of Wilmington. We're very proud of you and all of your accomplishments. And thank you to your parents, right? Every night, you say thank you to them before you head off to bed, yeah? And to the coaches, all the time and effort that they put into it to help you, and everybody drives you back and forth, and I hope you really appreciate that. And as you move up, and hopefully, we'll see you at that high school level playing hockey up there as well. But just a great accomplishment. Congratulations. Keep up the good work. Okay?
(applause).
We'll go right down the line. Mr. McCoy?
I know it's all been said, you know, a lot of times you hear a lot of bad that young kids do, but I'm looking out here, there's a lot of good in this room, and so it's really, you're putting a wonderful mark here in the town of Wilmington. You girls did fantastic. And the coaches, you know, don't forget your mom and dad, they're always getting up, taking you out there. My kids are a little bit older than Mr. Bendels, so, but I understand where it is. And at the last meeting, we had a lot of young men, and I remember Selectmen McConnell here, she stated, "We have a bunch of good-looking handsome young men." Well, I'm going to say, fairness to you girls, we have a lot of pretty young ladies here, all right? So, fairness to everybody, but, once again, you make the town proud, and your parents, and you guys are fantastic. And if you win it down the road, if you get a little old, you win a championship. I've been on board a couple of years, and when the high school won, they colored their hair blond. We came out wearing blond wig. So, if you guys decide to put some color in your hair, I'll put a pink wig on for you guys, all right? Okay, thanks. All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Everything has been said, but I do want to say one thing. I was a youth hockey player back in the day, and I don't think I could skate before I was ten years old, so you girls are doing ten times better than most of us out there. So, thank you for representing Wilmington and the great job you did. It's been said, but don't forget your parents and your coaches. I'm sure glad you girls had fun playing. I hope you did, because it's fun out there watching you guys play. Thank you.
I'll take it from here. I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge our former chairperson, Judy O'Connell, is in the room here. Judy has a vested interest in the team's success, and I'm sure she enjoys this as much as all the parents and the coaches as well. I want to, above and beyond saying congratulations to you ladies and coaches, I want to say thank you. You're thanking us for the words we're saying, but I want to thank you for really representing Wilmington. As you went out and played all these towns that your coach just told us about, you represented the town of Wilmington as you went into all those communities, and you represented us very, very well. So, those towns now view us and they judge Wilmington in a very positive light. They think good things about us because of the good things they saw in you. So, I thank you for being ambassadors of the town of Wilmington to the rest of our communities, and congratulations. I have a strange feeling, like I said to the boys a couple of weeks ago, we're going to see you ladies in here again in a couple of years, and I'm looking forward to that time. So, congratulations. We have... You're welcome. So, we have some certificates. I'm going to come out in front here, and Mr. Hall is going to read off the names, and we'll hand them to you. And as we read off your name, come up, I'll shake your hand, and then take your certificate, and then I go off, and we'll create a line, I guess, in front of the wall here, okay? Good.
The first certificate goes to Juliana Ingioli. And now for the coaches. And Carrie White.
I think we wanted to bring the girls here. They're getting stacked, they're close together, I think they're coming in to get a photo.
All right, you know how to do this, because that would fall back. (inaudible).
I just want to get in behind. (inaudible).
Want to get in behind? (inaudible). (inaudible). Want to guys hold them up so I can see them?
(inaudible).
Come on, Julia, say it. I'm fired up. I'm fired up. You're fired up. Yeah! You're fired up. Yeah! Give me a W. Tell you. Wait. When I say Wilmington, you say Wildcats. Wilmington. Wilmington. When I say blue, you say white. Blue. White. Blue. White. When I say number, you say one. Number. One. Number. One. Wilmington Wildcats, number one.
I don't know about you gentlemen, but that's the way to start a meeting. That's fun stuff. That's good. That is good stuff. (laughing) I like the way you roll. All right, our 7:15 scheduled appointment, just a few moments, we did, we're doing our own time here, is with David Carr Esquire regarding a public hearing to request the transfer of the all-alcohol license of Mystic Liquors Incorporated Doing Business as Wilmington Plaza Wine and Spirits to NR Wilmington Corporation. Doing Business as Wilmington Plaza Wine and Spirits, 258 Main Street in Wilmington. Do I have Mr. Carr present?
David Carr, yes.
Mr. Carr, how are you, sir?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Very well. It's a difficult act to follow.
(laughing) We'd like a chant, if you don't mind.
Yes. As mentioned, I represent NR Wilmington Corporation. They seek your approval in a license transfer of an existing liquor store, all package store, located at 258 Main Street in Wilmington, right next door to the Market Basket. It's been in existence for quite a number of years. My clients to my right, this is, to the far right, Rocky Patel and Nylesh Patel have over seventeen combined years of business in the package store business. They have three liquor stores that they currently own and operate in some fashion, Wakefield and Stoneham. We're seeking your approval so that we can get to the next stage with the ABCC and get their approval following yours, hopefully, this evening. Obviously, if you have questions and concerns, but earlier I submitted to your assistant, Beverly Dalton, this evening, the proof of service to all of the abudders, some twenty-one and twenty-two abutting neighbors that have been notified in tonight's hearing.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so, actually, I'll go to the board here and offer up the opportunity for any of our board members to ask any questions they may have. Mr. Loud, I'll start at your side, if that's okay?
I read the packet last night, and then again this afternoon, and really don't have any questions. Everything seems to be in order, sir.
Do we have any recommendations from the town manager relative to the chief or anything?
Yeah, now's as good a time as any, sure.
Yes, we have a recommendation from the police chief, Michael Begonis. Upon review, the Wilmington Police Department recommends approval of NR Wilmington Corporation's application for transfer of license. NR Wilmington Corporation, Nylesh Patel, President Kalish Patel, Treasurer, 229 Main Street, Wilmington, Mass.
From the town manager, I feel a lot of confidence on the chief and the town boards, so I wish you a brand new license. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would also just note for the record that, in addition to that recommendation, the building inspector, Al Spalding, indicates I have reviewed the above-mentioned application, have no outstanding zoning issues. And then, Shelley Newhouse, the health director, notes, "I recommend approval of the application of NR Wilmington Corporation DBA Wilmington Plaza Wine and Spirit for transfer of the alcohol package store license of Mystic Liquors DBA Wilmington Plaza Wine and Spirit to NR Wilmington Corporation DBA Wilmington Plaza Wine and Spirit." Thank you.
Mr. Carr?
I'm good.
Mr. Bendel?
Gentlemen, thanks for being here. Everything seems to be in order. I'm in favor of the sequester. Just have one question. Can the residents in town expect anything different from you? Is this going to be new ownership, same offerings?
The good prices, we're going to offer.
Okay. Thank you.
My question was very much the same as Mr. Loud's. Will you, either of you gentlemen be on-site and present during operations, or...
No, we're not working inside.
You are?
We're going to.
Very well. So, it isn't open, I'm sorry, do you have something?
I was just going to add that, in the event that the board is so inclined to make a motion to accept or to authorize this license, that the motion also include language that this issuance of the alcohol license is not detrimental to the educational activities of the Learning Center, which is at 220 R Main Street, is part of the authorization.
It's 220 R?
Yes.
Sorry. So, it's, please.
How's the operation, does it stay the same?
Yes. They're going to be from eight AM to eleven PM, Monday through Saturday, Sunday, ten AM to eleven PM.
Eleven PM? Is that changing what's currently there now?
Yes.
It's ten o'clock closing right now. That's his understanding, so it would be an extended hour.
Thank you.
It is a public hearing, so I'll offer the opportunity for anyone, residents or else present that would like to offer a question or comment. I see none, so I'll close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion, if there's one to be made.
Would you grant the request?
Would you grant the request with the language that the request is not, that the permit is not detrimental to the Learning Center at 220 R Main?
Sure, as described by the manager.
Very well. That's a motion made.
Seconded.
And seconded. All in favor? It's unanimous. Gentlemen, thank you for coming, and good luck to you. Welcome to Wilmington.
Thank you.
Our 7:25 scheduled appointment is with Colin M. Cushman of Sweet Pizza LLC Doing Business as Sweet Pizza. A request to obtain a common victuals license for property located at 206 Balladvale Street, Suite Four. I believe I have Mr. Cushman in front of me.
That would be me.
How are you, sir?
How you doing, guys?
Welcome. If you want to just summarize, we have the request in front of us, but you're here, so...
So, Sweet Pizza's been open for almost two years now on Balladvale Street, and I opened it with my partner, and he ended up selling it to me. So, it's just, you know, a transfer of the common vix license. It's going to be the same business as it was, just into transfer of the, I have created a new LLC, and it's just transferring the vix license, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Cushman. Jeff, do you want to highlight any recommendations?
Yes, we have a recommendation from Shelley Newhouse, the health director. I recommend approval of the application for a common victuals license submitted by Colin Cushman, Sweet Pizza LLC DBA, Sweet Pizza, located at 206 Balladvale Street.
I believe you have the wrong LLC. The Sweet Pizza LLC is the previous owner. I created a new LC, LLC, is Wilmington Sweet Pizza LLC.
Okay. Which, that's how it reads on the application, it just couldn't make...
And then, the inspector of buildings also recommends, "After review and consideration of the Ten Wilmington bylaws and all applicable codes, I have no outstanding zoning issues with the above-mentioned business."
Very well, thank you. Any questions from the board? Greg, I'll start.
Good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, good luck. Mr. McCoy?
I'm just wondering, is it Italian-style or pan pizza? Because I've had a few pizzas in my lifetime.
It's kind of a beach pizza, if you've heard, like, it's not really, it's thin crust, it's not really Sicilian, but it's a thin square pizza. If you haven't tried it, come by. You've tried it? It's good stuff.
Yeah, it is. My daughter got it, she loved it.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Loud?
I'm all set.
Nothing. That being said, I would accept, I have no questions either. With the recommendations here, I have no reason to stand in the way. I would accept a motion.
Make a motion that we grant the request?
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor? Mr. Cushman, good luck to you, sir.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. Have a good one.
So, our 7:30 scheduled appointment, we're just slightly ahead of schedule, but it's not a, it's not a visit, so we'll jump right to it, is with, really, speaking with Jeff Hall, our town manager, and have, give him the opportunity to reveal to us the approach, his approach, the town's approach, to the provision for a substance abuse service provider. So, Jeff, I'll hand it off to you.
Thank you. Just by way of background, you may recall that we first began discussions, and by we, I mean, the chief of police, the health director, some internal staff, as well as discussions happening with members of the Substance Abuse Coalition about eighteen months ago, eighteen to twenty-four months ago, about the prospect of looking for resources to address, unfortunately, what is an ongoing problem in Wilmington as it is everywhere else, and that is substance abuse. And the, after those discussions, there were some individual discussions that the police chief and the health director had with the representative from a behavioral health entity in the area about the prospect of providing services, and there seemed to be some interest at that level. Based upon that, in the fiscal '17 budget, I recommended eighty thousand dollars be appropriated for the purpose of issuing a request for proposal and engaging with a behavioral health company to provide those services. The RFP was issued at the end of February. Proposals were due at the end of March. Unfortunately, we did not receive any proposals, and in, as you recall, at the last meeting, the board was looking for the direction from here. We did meet internally and had some discussions with a number of people, including the behavioral health outfit that had early on expressed interest. As it turns out, apparently, part of the reason that they were not able to submit a proposal was staffing issues. They weren't able to deploy someone to Wilmington. We also had communications with the representative from the school department, Alice Brown Legrand, who, as you may know, is the coordinator of behavioral health with the school department, and communicated with her about the RFP and what we were seeking. She offered some advice in terms of the approach and suggested that the, in terms of qualifications, the types of people that we were looking for were probably not likely to be available through a consulting arrangement. So, based upon this information, it, at this point, I'm recommending that we take the approach of hiring an individual on a full-time basis to engage in this effort of assisting both the victims of substance abuse as well as the families, as was discussed previously. The scope of work, the job description, would really be multifaceted first, in part, working with the police department and accompanying officers when they go to a household or a location where someone is struggling with substance abuse, working with both the victims and their families to identify resources that might be available in making sure that they're able to get those resources, and then also following up with them at later, at a later point in time. So, this individual would not be treating these individuals, there wouldn't be a doctor-patient relationship, if you will, but they would be working with the families and the individuals to get them the resources that they need to try to address those issues. So, in terms of the timeline, we are looking to... address those issues. So in terms of the timeline, we are looking to finalize the job description by the end of the week. Also, we'll be having conversations with, or receiving information from other communities that have done this. In fact, D. Casey has obtained job descriptions from other communities already, and so we're going through those now, but we expect to finalize the job description by the end of the week. We would be looking to begin the advertising the week of May 1st, select and interview candidates based upon criteria that we set up through, by the week of May 22nd, and then essentially be looking to bring someone on board by the end of June. We expect that by the time we go through the interview process, maybe even second interviews, it's likely that the individual that is hired is going to have to provide notice to their existing employer, so we would expect that by the end of June or beginning of July, we would have someone in place.
Thank you, Jeff. Yeah, at our last meeting, I think it was the, the common theme or the common thread from those of us that were at this, on the board at the time, that we wanted to continue to attach a high level of priority to this effort. And I can see that that has been the intent here with your sequence of events. I guess, I'm satisfied, personally, I feel satisfied with the, with the schedule. If I may, at the same time I say that I'm satisfied, I'm frustrated that it doesn't move faster, but I don't, I don't offer that as a, as a gotcha or anything, it's just that that's the way that the process has to go. But I'm emboldened or made to feel more encouraged that we are at a point, finally, where we are taking some positive action steps forward, so it's good news in my regard. I want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to ask questions or offer commentary, and so I don't want to necessarily start anywhere. So yeah, Mr. McCoy, please.
Mr. Chairman, Jeff, I just want to ask a couple of quick questions. I know we talked about it, and I'm glad that you went through the process, and I've got a couple of questions. Are there other communities that, but Wilmington that has a full-time person that works at the position that you're looking to propose?
There are communities that have part-time individuals. I know Bilrika, for example, is part-time. Tewksbury, I believe, is, they share an individual with other communities. Reading, they do have, it's actually not an employee of the town, as I understand it, they have a separate entity that hires an individual, and I am not sure about North Reading.
The reason why I say, I'll be honest, you know, I said it last time, I wouldn't have an issue having a regional person. I don't know, do we actually really need a full-time person on staff to handle this? I mean, I know it's an epidemic, and I know we have to do our best, but, you know, I just, I don't know, a full-time employer, you know, an employee, we can't look at working with other communities, maybe hiring one individual, because I know we gotta, we talked about it last meeting, you're gonna have to pay health insurance, you're gonna have to pay all kinds of benefits, and I'm sure you're gonna have to pay some, something substantial. And we, couldn't we look before we hire this individual, if there's opportunity to, maybe a regional individual, you know, a couple of towns? I just put that out there, you know?
Well, I think the, one of the challenges with hiring someone regionally, and obviously depends upon the number of communities you're dealing with, but that means we're only getting that individual for, you know, a part-time basis. You know, I think there are enough cases, and the Chief can certainly speak to the numbers, but the, the fact that we have, you know, there are individuals out there that, that the Police Department knows of, and I should point out that this isn't just an issue that the Police Department deals with. This is, these instances are, come before the Veterans Agent as well as Elderly Services. So in my estimation, a part-time, person working part-time is not going to be able to address the demand for services.
Mr. Love?
If we could get the Chief, I'm just wondering about statistically, say, per year, how many times is this an issue where, you know, just to justify, you know, hiring somebody full-time, that's all.
No, thank you, Mr. McCoy, that's a, that's a good question. Thank you, the board, for allowing me to speak tonight. When we looked at that regional, regional approach, we saw that other communities had a regional approach. It was kind of a cursory, top-layer style, where they would come in, they would set up a shingle one day a week, have individuals come to them. This is a whole different model. We're looking to be proactive, we're looking to be grassroots, looking to hit the streets, when we get information that there's a family that's, has an individual struggling, to reach out to them. This isn't just for the individual that's addicted, it's for the family as well. If anybody's ever known anybody that lives in a family or in a household where there's a substance abuse problem with one of their beloved ones, they realize quickly that it's a health problem for the entire family. And there's a lot of, I guess, mystery about the whole process. And part of this plan would be to educate the people better, the families better, so they had more information that they could be there at that tipping point, at the time that's critical, to get the assistance that the individual needs. The average person that's in recovery, sits in recovery for about 10 years, probably goes to three major rehabs. That's a very frustrating 10 years for a family who really doesn't know what to do. So our plan here was to integrate a substance abuse counselor and a family counselor to the system to go out there and assist with the family. So we wouldn't just, for every case, it wouldn't just be one individual we would be talking to trying to get assistance to. It would be the entire family. So if that's a family of five, then there's five people that that individual would be trying to help, to make the proper referrals. Right now, the model kind of exists already in the school system, they have counselors in the school system, but they focus on the children. We've seen a lot over the years where there's elderly that are raising their grandchildren because their son or daughter is in addiction, and there's a lot of stress that goes with that for those folks. They're on fixed incomes, there's a lot that they don't understand, a lot of things that they, they have trouble navigating through, and the stress level is really, really heavy for them, as you can understand in that situation. Your later stages in life, and you're thinking you're going to be retiring, now you're taking care of some young grandchildren, and trying to struggle to get your, your child the help that they need. So this is, this is a bigger program than that. It always was, it wasn't something that was just, you know, to go out and make a quick referral. This is a follow-up process, this is a relationship process for every department head in the community that experiences this type of situation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So it's the bigger picture, the family's involved, I can understand, so, all right, mother, father, children, so, you know, I know it's an issue. I just was wondering to get a better feel on that, that's all. All right, thank you.
My dad, this is unique. No other community's doing what we plan to do. And I believe it's going to have a lot of success. I've spent a lot of time over the years sitting with families that struggle through this process and trying to help them, and knowing that I'm limited with the information that I can give them and the assistance that I can give them. I think that this gives us the opportunity to respond in conjunction with them, resolve any safety issues that exist, and then do the pass-off so that the counselor can get them directed to the places they need to go.
I'm glad you explained. Bottom line, you're the top cop, and if that's what you're saying, I have no issue with it. I just wanted to understand a little bit more. So, you know, it's actually a reach-out within the family, and, you know, and the family has friends and cousins and, all right, it's something important. No, no, all right, thank you, Chief.
Did you have a question, Mr. Love?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Chief, for the explanation. Jeff, is $80,000 going to be something that we're going to target for salary, or is it something less we're going to do? Has any research been done on a targeted salary for this employee?
That is something that we are finalizing now. We believe, based upon the information that we've received from other communities, that the $80,000 we have will be adequate to cover salaries.
And I just want to commend the board for pushing this forward, because it's a very important subject. So thank you.
Gentlemen?
There's a light at the end of the tunnel.
No, you said salaries are just...
Salary, so it would be just the one, just one, yeah.
All right, thank you. Just a couple of things. I appreciate this being on the agenda. I hope to see it on future agendas. As I mentioned before, this is probably my top priority here as I volunteer. I think it's worth noting, and this wasn't our first option, as it's noted here in the packet, we put a proposal out, we didn't get any responses, as you mentioned, so we're on to this. I appreciate the Chief's proactive approach. A lot of people talk about trying to lift the stigma around addiction. This is one way that Wilmington can be in the forefront of doing that, and I would most importantly point out that the taxpayers have already approved this money last year. And again, it's going to go before them next Saturday at Town Meeting for another appropriation. And so again, I think the money's already there. We obviously have identified that there's a need. I think this is a great approach, and I'm prepared to support this.
Thank you, Mr. Bendel. My, an observation that I have, and correct me if you, if I'm off-base on this, I kind of feel like this role, once it takes shape, will be like what Lou Semaglia does as a Veterans Agent, but for the civilian population. I know Lou is able to work with a number of the veterans who are struggling with addiction, or challenges or family situations, and he's working with that, that portion of the population exclusively by virtue of the fact they're veterans, but there are so many folks that aren't veterans that still need those kind of support services that, in the current model, just don't have a resource. And so I think this resource will sort of fill that gap. Is that a reasonable, I guess, assessment of the situation?
Absolutely, that's our hope. That's our, our hope is to establish this program. I expect it'll have a great amount of success, and it could become models for the communities going forward. It's a more holistic approach to the process. Stable environments is a huge key to being able to beat addiction, having that ability to, you know, come home to an environment that, that is safe and secure, and, and information is the key. If you've ever tried to go on a website like Samshire and try to look up information to give to your children or whatever, you can just get completely lost in that process. There's so much information out there, it's hard to pick and choose what works and what doesn't work. But at the end of the day, that still doesn't give that ability for a resource to make a referral for a more one-on-one clinical approach, so that that individual can get the specific help that they need, however they're going through it. They show that in a lot of statistics, children that are exposed to childhood trauma, and specifically the trauma of seeing an older sibling involved or engaged in substance abuse, have a higher propensity to become substance abusers themselves. And we're looking to be able to stop that gap, or at least slow it as much as we possibly can by getting the resources in early on that. And I think that as the program grows, more and more people will have comfort with it, because they'll understand where we're coming from, what we're trying to do. This isn't about putting handcuffs on people, it's about stemming the tide of this epidemic that is only growing, folks. You know, Wilmington's seen a reduction in numbers, most other communities are seeing an increase. So this is already kind of what we're doing, but we're doing it as lay, lay persons, as police officers. I think a clinician, somebody that has a better understanding of it, better ability to attain resources, is the right way to go. So I thank you for your support.
This discussion is healthy. I'm realizing, you know, I'm more in favor of it. I didn't realize at the moment there, like Lou Semaglia, who does a great job, veterans, and you're right, I'm glad you mentioned that, because having this discussion, it just makes me more to want to support this. And I'll say, now that you said it, I had a story. I had a kid that worked for me at the restaurant, his name was Eric, lived in Tewksbury, come back from Iraq, maybe you know who he is. He turned to drugs, and that was it. I gave Lou a call, I said, geez, anything you can do with the kids in Tewksbury. Lou took care of them, Lou did a great job. This discussion is healthy. I didn't really, I missed a vote on that, and I apologize. And that, I'm all for it, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Chief pointed out that numbers have reduced, and I think that Chief may agree, and I don't want to speak for you, but the numbers only identify those who are less fortunate, perhaps didn't survive. It doesn't take into account those who are battling addiction currently. So I think we can all agree that even one tragedy is more than enough to, to make us want to get some energy behind this. I do have a question, Mr. Man, for the manager, if it's appropriate through the chairman, that perhaps we could be provided a copy of the job description at our next meeting. It says here you'll have it done by the end of this week, so our next meeting, I believe, is May 8th. If we could get a copy of the description, and perhaps we could get an update on this bi-weekly as we come to our meetings.
We get back, it's every weekend, anyway, so whatever, as you're making progress, if you can just keep a surprise, that would be great. You know, it was, it was occurring to me, you know, we're, we're being a trailblazer in, with this particular position, and sometimes in municipal operations or government, I think, ah, I don't know if I want to be a trailblazer, because sometimes it's better, let's, let's, some other community make the mistakes and learn from them, and, and, you know, let, let them invent the wheel, and then we can go and get the wheel and, and apply it ourselves. But we're talking about human life, and we don't have the time to wait here. So on to your leadership and your guidance, and together with the people at Town Hall, I believe it's, this is the most appropriate time to be a trailblazer, and I'm encouraged by it. Do you envision, I don't know who to direct this to, where would this individual work out of, in, from the Public Safety Building or Town Hall or?
The Public Safety Building.
Okay, but not, it's not going to be an officer position? It would be just someone that collaborates with you and your team?
This kind of mirrors other models out there. There's a jail diversion program that began in Framingham. Advocates was the social services company that took the contract on through the state at that point, and they have a lot of success with having a close relationship with the Police Department, because that's when you're first notified of crisis, a lot of times, is through a call for service at the Police Department. And, you know, when we get there, we're police officers, so, you know, you know, I don't, I don't want to say that we're crude, but, you know, if you're a hannah, most everything looks like a nail. So in this situation, you want to commit and have the ability to stabilize a situation, understand when that pass-off is necessary, to go to somebody with a social services background that can help that person, or stay on and after it's stabilized, and deal with the things that we would ordinarily go to our next call for service. So I think it just expands our ability to provide a better service in total to Wilmington. With that, that model that exists in other locations, this is just a deviation of that. Our thought is that without the entire family being healthy as they can, it's very difficult for the individual in crisis to be healthy. So we want to be able to provide that entire support, and be more, I guess, fluid with the referral process, up and down, whether it's through the schools or through social services someplace else, to, to assist as many people as we can. Do you need a motion for us to accept this as a new position? I think we're all in favor of it.
This was just to provide the board with a, a status, and essentially provide the board with a game plan.
I appreciate the question, Kevin, because I was, I was going to go with the same, and while a formal vote seems not to be necessary, it does seem that there's a, an informal endorsement of the, of the, of the process here. So I would say engage and go forward. Thank you for staying aggressive on it. Thank you, Chief. So our 7:45, which is just slightly behind schedule here, is a, the discussion and the assignments of motions for the annual Town Meeting, which is this coming Saturday. So just as, by way of reminder, it is with some regret, only, only a small amount, that is, that I can't join you this Saturday at Town Meeting. I will be celebrating my son's confirmation in our church. So it's a big deal for he and for my family, and that's why I say it's only with some regret, because I'm very much looking forward to celebrating that event with him and my family. But it does take me away from you, my second family. So I'll leave it to Jeff to sort of go through the process and guide us as to who's going to be reading which motions.
So the board received in your packet a memo from me last week that outlined the assignment of motions, subject to any changes that you would like to make. Starting at the top, we start with Article 1 being Greg, followed by Article 2, the Committee Reports, Selectman Kyra, and then, and these, I would just suggest, obviously, if the board wants to make changes, so be it. Article 3 would be Selectman McCoy, 4, Selectman Loud, and then the Articles 5, 5A, B, C, D, would be all addressed by the Chairperson of the Finance Committee, and then back into capital would be Selectman Bendel. Again, capital 6B would be Selectman Kyra. 6C, capital, would be Selectman McCoy. Select, 6D would be Selectman Loud. 6E, still on capital, would be Selectman Bendel. Selectman Kyra would be assigned. 6F, again, capital. 6G is capital, that would be Selectman McCoy. 6H, Selectman Loud. 6I, Selectman Bendel. 6J, we're still on capital, would be Selectman Kyra. 6K would be Selectman McCoy. 6L, Selectman Loud. Article 7, Technology, would be Selectman Bendel. Article 8, Selectman Kyra. Article 9, Selectman McCoy. Article 10, Selectman Loud. Article 11, Selectman... Article 11, Selectman Bendel. Article 12, Selectman Kyra. Article 13, Selectman McCoy. Article 14, Selectman Loud. Article 15, Selectman Bendel. Article 16, Selectman Kyra. Article 17, Selectman McCoy. 18, Selectman Loud. 19, Selectman Bendel. 20, Selectman Kyra. 21, Selectman McCoy. 22, Selectman Loud. 23, Selectman Bendel. Then Articles 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, and 29, and 30, would be representative from the School Committee. Article 31, Selectman Kyra. Article 32, Selectman McCoy. 33, Selectman Loud. 34, Selectman Bendel. 35, Selectman Kyra. 36, Selectman McCoy. 37, Selectman Loud. 38, Selectman Bendel. 39, Selectman Kyra. Article 40, Selectman McCoy. 41, Selectman Loud. 42, Selectman Bendel. 43, Selectman Kyra. And Article 44 would be Selectman McCoy. Article 45, 46, 47, 48, and 49 would be a representative from the Planning Board. And then Article 50 would be Selectman Loud.
Very well. Those acceptable to everybody? Good. I wish you all well.
Sure you don't need help Monday, Sunday, Saturday, Mike?
Mr. Chairman, I would just note, we received notice late this afternoon that Article 51, which is a petition article, that was submitted for the purposes of rezoning 278 Lowell Street, which is the property next to Burger King, that article has been withdrawn.
Thank you.
Article 51.
Thank you, sir.
And that will be obviously indicated pretty much at the beginning of the Town Meeting, I imagine, yes?
Yes.
Very well. 8 o'clock scheduled appointment. We are a little ahead of schedule, but again, I think we can proceed with it not being, involving a guest, is the reorganization of the board. So because of the election, and Ms. O'Connell leaving us, I sit here tonight, really just as a placeholder. It is now the opportunity for members here to decide who will act as a guide, working directly with the manager over the course of the next year, collaborating with the individuals here. So I'll open it up for conversation. This is always kind of one of those kind of weird moments, where there's no real process for it. So I'll shut up and back off, and let individuals chime in as they care to.
Well, I guess I'll start. I'll put forward the name of Mike Shampoo as the chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Prior chairman, you're in that seat right now, you might as well just stay right there and keep it.
I'll second that, if it's a motion for discussion. If I may, I'd echo my colleague's comments. I think he's done a nice job in the past, proven to do a nice job here so far tonight. I don't see why you shouldn't do the rest of the year.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'm humbled with your confidence in me. Any other conversations or motions to be made?
I would echo the comments of the other two prior.
Well, I don't hear any other motions. Thank you all. It's not big shoes to fill. Ms. O'Connell was a superior chairperson of this board, and I'm humbled with the opportunity to serve the people of Wilmington. I only hope that in so doing, we can cultivate an environment of collaboration amongst ourselves and with our fellow volunteers throughout the community, on various boards, and with our residents, and just try to keep it always moving forward, and always moving positively towards common goals. So I accept humbly the nomination and the second. So I guess that is a nomination and a second, all in favor. Thank you. Thank you all. It's unanimous. So we don't have to move. That's the first time in a while we don't have activity at the table. Thank you. Jeff, if it's all right, we'll jump right over into communications, please.
Yes, the first item is the memorandum that was provided to the board regarding substance abuse, which was previously addressed. Next is correspondence from James DiLorenzo from EPA. This was correspondence that he provided that relates to Olin's response to EPA's proposal to develop alternatives, to begin to look at addressing remediation. The EPA proposed a development of alternatives to address contaminants in operating units 1, which is the Olin property itself, operating unit 2, which is the off-property sediment and surface water, and then a portion of operating unit 3, which includes the so-called DAPL. Olin's response to EPA is that they do not believe that there is enough information at this point to initiate a feasibility study. They believe, they do not believe, as does EPA, that the DAPL is a so-called principal threat waste, which is a term that is defined within the EPA lexicon or regulations. And they suggest that because it's not mobile, there doesn't need to be, and this is my words, not theirs, but essentially, they don't believe that there's quite the level of urgency that EPA is suggesting there is in terms of beginning to look at alternatives. Olin also believes that in developing remedial alternatives for the DAPL at this point in time, may undermine other solutions that might be available for the groundwater contamination. So there's clearly a difference of opinion between Olin and EPA, and they were scheduled to meet today to work through this. If you recall, I had mentioned at a prior meeting that Olin exercised a measure under the terms of their agreement with Olin for further discussion on this point. So I would expect in the next week or so, we'll be getting a further update from EPA as to what came out of the meeting today.
Jeff, may I ask, this communication, this type of communication, are we continuing to seek the translation of it, for lack of a better word, or interpretation of it from geo-insight?
Yes.
So they're privy to this, and offer insight as is appropriate?
Yes.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Jeff, I just want, I mean, I want to say that, I read this, and this is really insulting from Olin, to talk about the DAPL and not to take care of that. I mean, I'm not an expert at it, but EPA wants them to handle it, and they have the gall to not want to do that. I would think that the EPA would be the voice to have them do that. I mean, on page 3, for them to say that because the town is being provided private water, and the residents in certain areas are getting bottled water, that they don't have to research the DAPL, that just is so insulting to the residents of this community. You know, is this being passed also to our congressional legislators, and so that they can still keep a handle on it? I know that we've had meetings with them in the past.
Right.
You know, I know we're waiting for more information, I'm sure, that you haven't heard from EPA today.
No.
As to the results of the meeting. But I just, I read through this, and it's just appalling that Olin is taking this approach.
Yeah. I would agree. And there's no question, and that is particularly, I think, insulting, I guess, to suggest that because Olin has agreed to provide bottled water to the folks on Cook Ave, that that somehow mitigates the need for solutions to be looked at sooner rather than later. I think the, as I understand it, in terms of the legal agreement, and I do not have a copy of the agreement between EPA and Olin, but, you know, and I don't want to speak for Olin, but the sense I have is they're trying to strongly encourage Olin to move in this direction, without getting into outright litigation. Whether it may come to that in the end is another question, but...
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Selectman Kyra, been on the board for a while. You can't trust Olin. I mean, we're just coming to the conclusion right now, you can't trust Olin at all. The bottom line is, they paid $3 million to the town, they got off cheap, and that's it. And that's what you're referring to. You can't trust them at all. They're challenging EPA, you know, and bottom line is, you cannot trust Olin one bit. You can't. You've got to fight them vigorously, because they're going to come back, and they're going to say they're wrong, they're going to tie it up, they're going to hire a consulting firm out of New Hampshire, they do water tests, they're going to get this result, that result. You can't trust them at all. I've been saying it for years. They got off cheap, $3 million bucks, you can't trust Olin. And that's our fault.
Mr. Chairman.
Not mine.
If I may, to the manager, would it be appropriate? I agree with my colleague's comments. Thank you, Mr. Kyra, for bringing that up. Would it be appropriate for us to respond, as a board, to this letter with our disgust? I mean, later on, Mr. Kyra points out an excellent point, but later on, it says, "They don't believe this poses a risk to the independent groundwater at the site." I couldn't disagree with that more.
Yeah. It's crazy.
I would ask the people that are drinking bottled water, if they think they're at risk, their water's at risk. I believe it is. So would it be appropriate for us to respond to this? Some type of a form of a letter through the, I mean, just out of pure disgust? If they want to write absolute trash, we should be able to respond.
I, you know, I think it certainly would be appropriate to respond. I guess the, I'm not necessarily sure that we have a forum to respond, or whether, you know, the, a letter...
We have their mail addressed, right?
I'm sorry?
We have their mail addressed?
Well, yeah, I mean, there's no, yeah, we can certainly send a letter. I guess the question that I'm not clear on is whether, at the end of the day, what impact it will have, but certainly, I guess there's no harm in expressing the town's frustration or objection to the tone of the letter.
Well, I think we should. You know, just everything we can do to oppose this, whether it's letter after letter, we'll spend the money on the paper, as far as I'm concerned.
And I agree with Selectman Bendel, should the letter go actually to EPA rather than Olin? Obviously, Olin is going to take the letter and just put it in a circular file.
Right.
But we want to make sure that going to the EPA, that, you know, what they're providing us is not reality. So I, you know...
Yeah, I think the letter should be directed to EPA, and probably copied to Olin.
And our delegation as well?
Yes.
You know, we have a pretty open line of communication with Mr. DiLorenzo, and I don't want to give him a pass at all here, but I have gotten a sense in meetings, when he has been present, or even a presenter, that as a federal agency, the EPA ties his hands quite a bit with regards to the actions that he has the, or that the EPA can take. So I certainly, if they had a meeting today, I'd love to hear the results of that meeting, you know, sooner than later. And to the extent that this body here wants to pen a letter, really just voicing our opposition or our disappointment, and maybe that's not a strong enough word, with the assertions that Olin are making in this presentation, you know, I don't, what I don't want to see happen is Mr. DiLorenzo get the sense that this is another memo that comes across our desk and doesn't get the attention that it ultimately, that it deserves. So some type of prudent, quick action that, you know, is it time for Mr. DiLorenzo to be before us, rather than in memo form, maybe in personal form, to give us a sense of where we are, and so that we can really interact with him on a one-to-one basis, rather than doing it through paper? It's just a thought.
I agree with you. I'd love to have him, invite him in, and I'd like to invite the residents who live in that area to be here too, so they can hear their concerns. And I know it's not always thrilling to sit at a selectmen meeting, but certainly, they're more than welcome, as far as I'm concerned.
We do have periodic open forum, and I'm not sure when the next one is scheduled for. So most assuredly, if Mr. DiLorenzo or an EPA representative was going to be here, we'd certainly want to publicize that to the community, and anyone that wants to have their voice heard could come, but, I'm sorry, Jeff, I didn't want to step in.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I did, probably a month and a half or two ago, in conversation with Mr. DiLorenzo, talk about the prospect of having him back out to provide a status. And he was, at that point, suggesting August or September as a, based upon the work that was being done, and the timing of different submittals that Olin was required to make, that that would be, at that time anyways, from his perspective, a good time to come out and speak with the board.
Mr. Chairman, I hate to get all worked up over this, but I can't help but do it. I mean, I think we should even include in the letter, "Let's copy it to the resident. Anybody who's receiving water at their house, bottled water at their house, should get a copy of this, to let them know, we're with you on this, we're totally opposed, and we're doing everything we can, even if it's in form of a small letter, and we're just not going to let something like this stand." Mr. Kyra pointed out a great line. We're just not going to let, we're not going to stand for this as a community.
We're not together here again until May 8th, if I'm doing, if I've looked at the calendar correctly. Do you, gentlemen, wish to see the copy of this letter before it goes out, and sort of, I don't know, or, I mean, how do you want to proceed? Do you want to just entrust that Jeff is getting the tenor and the tone of what you hope to have it say?
I believe so. I think he'd be a lot more polite than I would be.
Mr. McCoy?
Yeah, thank you. I trust just wisdom. When you're talking about bottled water, they promised the residents of Cook Street that they were going to pay bottled water. I heard from a resident, they stopped that. So it would be nice to find out if that has happened for us before anything, you know, so I hope, that's what I was told by a resident, they have stopped that.
That would be news to me. I will check.
I heard that, I don't know, I'm just, now you're talking about bottled water. So, you know, I would hope to think that's not the case, but I'm just passing on that a resident said they've stopped that.
So satisfactory, then, if Jeff pens a letter over the course of the next few days, and you'll send a copy of it in our next packet then?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next is just correspondence from Rick Hill from Little League. Just read this into the record. "On behalf of the Wilmington Little League Board of Directors, would like you, would you please express our thanks to Town Manager and Wilmington Board of Selectmen for participating in our opening day parade and ceremonies at Town Park. We really appreciate each of them for their support, not only for the event, but for giving us a year-round support to allow us an opportunity to be the best we can be for the baseball and softball players of Wilmington." Next is memo from me to the board, just presenting you with the appointments that you will be slated to make at your meeting on May 8th. And I'll just go through the list here. We have the Animal Control Officer for a one-year term, Christopher Sullivan, Board of Appeals, five-year term, Thomas Syracuse. While I'm on that, I would just note, with the election of Mr. Loud to the board, he did provide me with a letter resigning from the Board of Appeals, so there will be a vacancy on the Board of Appeals. And my suggestion is that the board consider a process for the replacement. What I would suggest is posting of the opening on the town's website, which you may recall, we did the last time, we had a vacancy, we can do that immediately tomorrow. And then considering, consider holding interviews, as again was done in the previous instance. Consider that the week of May 24th. Perhaps have a deadline for the week of May 19th, for people to get their letters of interest into the office. Schedule interviews the week... their letters of interest into the office. Schedule interviews the week of the 24th. And then you could either, the board could either make their decision at the conclusion of that meeting, or perhaps on the meeting of June 12th. I would note that the Board of Appeals meets again on June 14th. So there is, I think there is some measure of timeliness here, so that matters before the Board of Appeals are not disrupted.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just say a couple of things. The Board of Appeals does have a very large case that was continued till the June 14th, so I think it's pretty important that we get five full members for that case to be heard on June 14th. But the other thing with four members, it, the applicants have a choice to either continue, to go on with their case that night because they need all four members to approve whatever's in front of them, or if they don't get that, they won't get whatever they're asking for. So it's important that the Board of Appeals lives on with four members as little time as possible. So if we could possibly do what Jeff suggested and maybe appoint someone on the 24th, that would be better for the Board of Appeals. And also, Tom Saragusa is a great asset to the Board of Appeals, and I strongly recommend him for the Board of Appeals.
Does that sound, that plan sound acceptable to everybody, posting that post haste? So you can get that on there as soon as tomorrow, potentially, Jeff?
Yes.
By virtue of us having this meeting this evening and it being broadcast, any folks from throughout the community that might be inclined or interested in volunteerism for the town, zoning Board of Appeals, please consider submitting. Will there be an application available, or how do they go?
There is, people can just simply send either an email or a letter just expressing their interest in any background they feel would be relevant.
Very well, thank you. And our press is present here, so we appreciate your getting that word out as well.
And so if the board is inclined to adopt this schedule and, for example, establish a deadline for letters of interest to be Friday, the 19th of May, that gives folks about a month, a little less than a month to respond. And then you have a meeting on May 22nd. I would suggest it would probably not be advisable to conduct these interviews on the 22nd, but perhaps Wednesday, the 24th. Depending upon the number of applicants that come in, we could set up interviews that evening and structure it. I think the last time they were in half-hour intervals.
Yes, yes, very well.
So the 24th?
Yes. We'll schedule it.
Moving on in terms of other appointments, Board of Registars, a three-year term to expire 2020, Edward Sousa, Counsel for the Arts, two-year term to expire 2020, Sarah Brooke, Jean Chang, Marguerite Elia, Diane, Gian Bredano, and Linda Malloy. And then Fence Viewers, one-year terms, Paul Looney and John Spalding. Scholarship Fund Committee, Paul Ruggiero as interim superintendent, Susan Clarkin, Carol King, Robert Peterson, Michelle Kyren Norton. Town Accountant, Michael Morris. And then for Town Council, a one-year term, Deutsch Williams, Brooks, Durensis, and Holland. Under the Constables, these are one-year terms, Barbara Cola, Jason Costa, Alan Hunter, Frank Ingram, John Bridges Jr., Paul Bruce Jr., Ronald DeGregorio, Dennis Otis, William Pepaselli, John Rowan, and Anthony Seiya. Also Christopher Sullivan, only in conjunction with his duties as an Animal Control Officer. Then next, these are, there's a separate memo from me to the board identifying positions that I am looking to make appointments or reappointments to with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, and this would be Commission on Disabilities, Phyllis DiGenetti. And then also continuing on the Commission on Disabilities, there's a vacancy. This, per the law, the individual that would be qualified to fill this vacancy would be an individual who has a handicap. Another term to expire 2018, again, another vacancy, person would need to have a handicap. And then a third vacancy would be a family member of an individual. And then under Historical Commission, three-year term to expire 2020, Gerald Duggan, Robert Mallett. And then there's a vacancy, a recent vacancy that, on that committee. So we have, we'll be posting that as well. Permanent Building Committee, three-year term to expire 2020, George Hooper and John Holloway.
So if I may, just at this moment, you know, again, I want to impress upon folks that might be listening to, if it's not you, maybe it's someone you know, share with your neighbors. We have vacancies on the Commission on Disabilities and vacancies on the Historical Commission. So if you or someone you know you think would be a good fit for any of those roles, please reach out to the town manager's office as soon as possible and put your skills and expertise to work for the benefit of the town. Thank you.
Then next, we have correspondence from individuals that are seeking reappointment to be constables, the first being Paul Bruce Jr. He writes, "I would like to personally thank your office along with the Board of Selectmen for allowing me to serve as a constable for the town of Wilmington. I'm formally requesting that the Board of Selectmen renew my constable license for 2001, for the 2018 year," I think he means. "I thank you in advance for your time and consideration." Ronald DeGregorio notes, "Dear Board of Selectmen, please reappoint me as a constable to Wilmington, for Wilmington. I have been a constable in Wilmington since 1992 and would appreciate your approval of the reappointment. I retired as a Superior Court Officer for the Middlesex Superior Court for 28, after 28 years. I'm also a Vietnam veteran serving in the United States Air Force from May 1, 1961 until April 30, 1967, and was honorably discharged April 30, 1967. I still live at 11 Marriott Road and have 44, have been there for 44 years. I will abide by your request not to solicit clients in Wilmington, but have authority to serve civil process for my clients. I'm still a constable for Woburn, Medford, and Cambridge, as well as Wilmington, and have an active bond for each city and town. My bond is good until August 2019 for Wilmington, at which time it will be renewed, and I will send it to the clerk's office to be filed. I've also completed a training program on conflict of interest law. Thank you for your consideration on this reappointment." This next one is John Rowan. He indicates, "I request renewal of my constable appointment. I have been a constable for many years in Wilmington with no complaints. I have filed and paid any fees required of me. Please contact me if you have any questions or concerns." Next is a letter from, this is a letter from me to John Gogan. This is an annual letter that goes out to representative from either the Democratic or Republican Party. In this case, the Republican Party, just noting that the individual, Edward Sousa, his term expires as of April 30th on the Board of Registars, and it references the general law that is applicable, and he has requested to provide the name or names of individuals to be brought forward for consideration.
Have you not heard back from him?
I have not, and that's, does not seem unusual.
Ah, okay. We have a few, a couple of board to consider items, and I'll let you highlight the first one here, from Deborah Potter.
Yes, Ms. Potter has had an auctioneer's license for a number of years now, and this, for whatever reason, the license was not renewed. It expired in November. So now she is seeking, it isn't a renewal, it's actually an application for an auctioneer's license. She currently operates at 355 Middlesex Ave, which is the building over by the registry. The recommendations, recommendation from the Chief of Police, upon review, the Wilmington Police Department recommends approval of Deborah A. Potter's application for an annual auctioneer's license doing businesses. Boston Auctions and Antique LLC, Deborah A. Potter, corporate officer, 355 Middlesex Ave, Suite 11. She did provide a couple of references here from other auctioneers who apparently know her as, to be a reputable individual.
Thank you. I don't believe I see Ms. Potter here, so I will go to the board if there's any questions or concerns or a motion.
Do we need recommendations from anybody?
Just, well, so the police chief did recommend, based upon their review of her application, recommends approval.
Thank you.
So she did not have this since November? Was she still operating from November until now?
No, not that we know of. I mean, we did contact, actually Beverly contacted her and made her aware that she was not able to operate as an auctioneer during that interim period, and to our knowledge, she did not.
Any other questions? Anyone want to make a motion to approve Deborah Potter's auctioneer license?
Make a motion to approve as described by the town manager.
Second, Mr. McCoy's motion.
Motion, eight and second. Any further discussion? I see none. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. We wish Ms. Potter well.
Next under Board to Consider is a request from Teresa Castellano to conduct a 5K road race in Wilmington. This would be the third annual. I'll just note, she writes to the board on April 5th, "Please accept this letter as a formal request to have the third annual Tony A. 5K. We'd like to use the same route that was used last year, and we'll contact the police department as soon as we're granted permission by the Board of Selectmen and the date assigned." And she offers several dates here as possible, dates, September 30th, October 1st, October 14th, or October 15th. My recommendation would be October 14th. We've checked with the school department, there's no conflicts there, and should not be a problem.
Very well. I know that this is an event that they've run, this is the third, so we know that we've, they've done it in the past and with success, both from a fundraising perspective, but also for the community. So I'm in favor of it personally. Any questions from members here?
Mr. Chairman. No, I'm sorry, I didn't reference a time which wasn't in the letter, but it would be, at least in the past, it's been nine o'clock, so I would anticipate a 9:00 AM start time.
Mr. Chairman, having attended this in the past, I would move that we grant this request.
Second. A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. We wish them well. Public comments. Anybody wish to have their voice heard? Mr. McDonald, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. First, I'd like to begin by congratulating Mr. McCoy and Mr. Loud on their victory, and I wish you great success on the board. And I pray for you that your contributions make the town a better place to live in. And I also wanted to thank the voters who took the time to come out and vote. And whether you win or whether you lose an election, it's important to remember that the people of Wilmington really need to win. And so I wish you guys well. I do have a few comments tonight that I'd like to share with the board. Listening to the meeting tonight and trying to do a little brainstorming on how I might be able to contribute some ideas to the board, I'd like to set forth some ideas. You spoke pretty extensively about the drug issue, and I like to think about things from a business-minded point of view in terms of economics. With regard to the addressing of the drug issue, I'd like to point out that we've had a dear officer in the past, a Drug Abuse Resistance Education Officer, who was part of the police department. I'm just kind of a little bit concerned that we're spending this additional money when we should be hiring police officers that are actually trained, certified, and able to do something in addition to just writing a traffic ticket, such as dealing with this drug issue. And I think that that would save the town a lot of money. And to address the hours that the individual would work, you might think about hiring somebody that was able to work from noon time to, say, 8:30 PM. That way, he could address issues in the school and issues at home. And I think that might be something to think about. The other concern that I had was listening to you guys talk about the Olin issue. I'd like to just ask a question before I make my comments, because Mr. McCoy got me a little bit concerned. And I've heard some chatter in the past that there was some type of secret agreement, settlement agreement with Olin that let them off the hook. And I was told that the agreement was a tolling agreement just for water. In other words, Olin was going to pay to bring the water main from Woburn and connect us to the MWRA at their cost. So can somebody enlighten me if there's some type of agreement with Olin, such as a settlement that left them off the hook for liability? Because I was told that there was still an open avenue for them to be held liable for the issues that occurred on that site.
Yeah, I mean, I'll say what I think I know, and I'll certainly ask anyone that has more experience, and Jeff, that's probably you. I don't think, Olin is not off the hook. And I don't want to speak for Mr. McCoy. They certainly, well, again, I'll let Mr. McCoy speak for Mr. McCoy, but they're still very much on the hook. So EPA is holding Olin accountable for what took place there, and Olin will, when we ever get to a point when we're cleaning that place up, Olin's going to be footing that bill. So they're still very much involved. And that's really, I think, part of the challenge of this process is that EPA is working with Olin, and they're not seeing eye to eye on what that process ought to be going forward. But Olin is still very much in the game, and Olin will still very much be a part of the cleanup process. Is that a reasonable assessment?
Yes, it's, I mean, Olin is on the hook for the cleanup, certainly with EPA. The town has not signed any kind of an agreement that lets them off the hook.
Okay, so I appreciate that, Mr. Hall. I'm just a little bit concerned that the board isn't being a little more aggressive on this, knowing that people have died of cancer in town, and knowing that our wells were shut down, and the specific compound that was a carcinogen that was found in our wells migrated from the Olin site. So it's a little perplexing for me to see the board not putting forth a motion to have our attorneys take some type of legal action against Olin. To be perfectly honest with you, I mentioned at a prior meeting manslaughter charges. If somebody is on record as saying that individuals from that company dumped chemicals into a lagoon, and that's clearly documented, I don't know why the town can't be proactive and represent the residents and say, "Look at, we're not going to play games with you anymore, Olin. We're not going to play games with the EPA, which is really a revolving door for industry, individuals to go..." individuals to go from industry to government, to protect the industry, protect the, um, industry from, uh, any type of liability. Just like the FDA has pharmaceutical people that go from the pharmaceutical industries to the FDA, and I think it's about time that we just say, "Hey, um, the line's been crossed, you wanna play games with us? You wanna say that you don't think that there's any type of threat or migration of the DAPL? Well, this is what we're doing. We got $18 million in the bank, that's free cash. We have a numerous amount of residents that have died of cancer. We have a town clerk that documents death certificates and causes of death. Why don't we do something proactive and be really aggressive?" Olin is a, not a multi-million dollar company, it's a multi-billion dollar company. It's massive. Their assets are astronomical.
I'm gonna just take it from here. Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Um, I, I wanna just cover one bullet point, uh, in your, in your presentation there, and that is, it is my feeling that as long as I've been on this Board, um, that this Board and, uh, the, the paid employees of the town have been taking this issue very seriously, and, uh, acting as aggressively as is appropriate and feasible to be able to act in a way that keeps Olin on the table, uh, and, and accountable, and, uh, in, in, in the project. And ultimately, by virtue of having EPA involved, the EPA is really running this project and will get us to a point where we can clean up the site. The charges that you're suggesting, uh, that we, uh, go out and hire an attorney to file charges of, of homicide or whatever, uh, I can assure you only of this one thing, that this Board consults with our town attorney ongoing. Um, and, uh, we, uh, we, none of us are experts in, uh, the, uh, this type of technology and, and water, and how water moves in, in an aquifer, et cetera. Um, but we consult with the experts and seek the advice of experts, whether they be, um, experts in the field of, uh, you know, a water flow, uh, or chemicals, or in this case, attorneys. And, uh, so, uh, we have collectively as a Board, uh, always acted, um, as aggressively as, had, as has been deemed appropriate, given the circumstances and given the advice from counsel. So that's my position and how I feel, um, comfortable in the, and the, and what I have voted for, uh, all the years that I've been on this Board, and comfortable with the direction that we continue to take. It moves slowly, and it frustrates me, and I sense that it frustrates many other people, but it's moving. Uh, and we are going to see, in our lifetime, a time when that DAPL and other nasty chemicals at that site will be coming out of the ground. And we need to stay the course and stay aggressive, as we, as I pledge to do, uh, to get us to that point. I ask Mr. Hull to please compliment any, uh, any, any more.
Yeah, I would just make a couple of points. One, um, you know, throwing out the idea that, that there's, uh, that people in Wilmington, or that all people in Wilmington that have had cancer are somehow connected to, um, the Olin contamination, uh, there's never been any facts to that, uh, that statement. Certainly, the Massachusetts, the Department of Public Health, uh, has, had commissioned a study that unfortunately has had fits and starts over the years because of funding or other circumstances, but that study has never been concluded, to my knowledge, and there has never, again, to my knowledge, been any information whatsoever that has identified particular individuals who have, uh, had cancer or died of cancer to the, uh, Olin plume. So to suggest that, uh, I guess, or infer that the Board of Selectmen and myself and others are heartless in allowing people to die of cancer just doesn't, doesn't fly. Um, the fact of the matter is that these type of projects, uh, like hundreds and thousands across the country are superfund sites, uh, and there is a process that communities have to go through, uh, in order to get them resolved. EPA, uh, is, is the agency that is tasked with moving that process forward. Uh, I, I'm not aware of any superfund sites that have been, uh, you know, with, particularly with sites with this level of complexity, that have been, uh, resolved in a matter of 10 or 15, or 20, or even 30 years. These are unfortunately, um, you know, long-term issues. Uh, I'm not making excuses, but that's just the reality of what we're dealing with. I think the Board, and I certainly can speak for myself in saying, we've been attentive and focused on holding Olin's feet to the fire, but we have to work within the legal constraints of the system, and suggesting or filing a claim of manslaughter, I think, would be, quite frankly, a waste of town money.
Well, I appreciate your comments, um, they're duly noted. I think it might be prudent for the town to, um, implement a program where, uh, they notify the residents of the situation, and, and a resident that has, uh, been diagnosed with cancer, um, can be proactive to see if there's any types of those carcinogens, um, that are found in their, in their system of their body. So for you to say that, Mr. Hull, I, I've never said that you are heartless concerning that measure, so, uh, I, I don't know where you got that from. But I am a little disappointed that, uh, the town officials aren't doing something that's gonna scare the crap out of Olin. And, uh, I think, um, if you got proactive and you started saying, you know, "We wanna notify people that carcinogens have been found, we want you to notify your physicians, we wanna notify your laboratories, so that if there's some type of compound that's a cancer-causing compound that came from the Olin site, it can be documented." So, uh, we would have the evidence to bring forth some type of claim like this, and Olin would quit playing us for fools. Uh, so, um, I don't know how that would be done. We have 23,000 people in this town, we have a lot of people that are much more brilliant than I am, much more brilliant than this Board is, that we could ask for their input and see what type of, um, solutions that they have to offer for. We, I'm sure we can come up with some great ideas if we put it forth to the community, but to just sit there and just say, "Oh, you know, it's a slow process, the EPA moves like a snail." You know what? That doesn't fly, Mr. Hull, when people are dying left and right of cancer, and Wilmington is designated as a high cancer rate town. So, um, that's enough on that issue. The other concern that I have is, um, Mr. Shampoo, congratulations on being appointed Chairman again.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, it's my understanding that the Chairman sets the agenda, and, um, a lot of nice things come before the Board. I'm not, I'm not belittling that, but there are a lot of things that don't come before the Board, and when I drive through town and I see the massive amounts of potholes, and I never see that on the agenda, I just put my hands up and say, "Can you please do something about some of these problems that are solutions?" I went down Waltham Street today by WCTV. It, it looks like Iraq, it looks like craters. I mean, you can't, you can't drive down that road without all four tires hitting potholes all the way down there. And I just can't for the life of me, that's gone, that's not going on for months, that's going on for years. I go down Balladvale Street.
The fact of the matter is that Waltham Street is an unaccepted street, which is, uh, there are a number of streets in town that are unaccepted, and the town, uh, is not, uh, responsible. In fact, we're, we're not supposed to be spending public funds on ways that are not accepted as public ways. So, the town, uh, has periodically, uh, put, uh, assisted, uh, for example, in, in, prior to the start of the, um, half marathon, which starts from that location, uh, have put in some temporary patch to try to smooth things over. Again, uh, the town is not, uh, responsible for maintaining private ways, but has made an exception in that instance, but, uh, they, it, they're simply not public ways.
Um, I actually suspected that you would say that, Mr. Hull, um, but I'm pretty sure that you'd be more than willing, every year, to take that industrial and that commercial tax money from those people that are paying, what, $32 per thousand on their taxes? And I don't know why you can't bring those people in and say, "Let's do something about this. This is really a disgrace." Concerning Main Street, I think Main Street's probably an accepted road, I think Balladvale's probably an accepted road, and I think there's numerous, uh, roads around town that are accepted. And I bet you if I check that book, that I'm gonna see the DPW guy being put in for a pay raise this year. Right? And so, I'm gonna ask the Board to reject that pay raise and take that money and start fixing the potholes that he should be fixing. And the last issue that I wanted to bring up, okay, is that I've spent quite a bit of time down at Demming Way, and to spend time with those senior citizens, you get to learn a lot. And one of the most disgusting things that I've witnessed down there is the amount of vacant units. I'm not gonna get into, um, into too much, the prior meeting where I had to leave, but a paid town individual slammed me, slandered me, and right before an election, uh, tried to belittle me, calling me a coward or anything like that, when numerous meetings, when he was at the meetings, I stood up to him, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna say what I, I, I'm gonna have to say tonight, that he came down at that meeting with veterans. He had his team of veterans trying to look like a big hero, okay?
Be careful, Kevin, okay?
Let me tell you something.
Be careful.
Those veterans, okay, those veterans help homeless people. And for me to go down to Demming Way and see many, many vacant units, and to hear him say what he said, and to be with a group of guys that help homeless people, and to see homeless people, and to witness vacant units, is disgusting. And I pulled out, I pulled out the, um, agenda for the town meeting, and he's getting a six thou, $6,600 raise this year, and we have vacant units and homeless veterans. And you guys listened to that crap? The paper printed that crap the week before the election? And so, I would like you guys to stand up at town meeting and say, "No, Mr. Semaglia, you're not getting a pay raise. Why don't you take a little break from going to your luncheons at the senior center, and take a little drive down to Demming Way, and take a look at the vacant units, and then maybe go to a homeless veteran's shelter, and maybe do your job and put veterans in those units? Cause they're supposed to get first dibs on those units."
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
And that's about all I have to say tonight. Thank you very much.
You've, I, you've been heard. Appreciate, uh, your, uh, your comments, uh, and everything is taken under advisement, except for the last part. Uh, I can assure you, uh, that-
Why don't you take a ride down to Demming Way tonight?
Mr. McDonald? Mr. McDonald, you're no longer recognized here, please, sir, don't, don't do it. You started off great, okay? And you ended off on a sour note again. So I don't mind. Every, every meeting, if you want to, uh, open up conversation, excuse me, if you want to open up conversation and deliver your thoughts in a respectful tone, in a way that we can converse like grownups, you're welcome at that microphone. When you start yelling into that microphone and besmirching the character of someone that is, is beyond reproach in this community, as well as in this Commonwealth, then, then you're off base. You just have nothing to stand on, sir, and I won't let you do it. So, you're, you're done, sir, you're done, sir. I, I, that's where I take issue with everything, everything else you said, you were, you, you were entitled to say, and we heard you, and I, and I know that we have notes that were taken from some of your commentary, but I can tell you, sir, that I will defend Mr. Semaglia and his department until my dying day. And that is how I'll end this conversation. You're, you're, you're not recognized. Um, so thank you, uh, that was the, uh-
Thank you.
Is there any other public comments? I see none. So, uh, new business or items that, uh, not reasonably anticipated by the Chairman? Uh, 48 hours in advance of the meeting, and, uh, Mr. Bendel, I'll start with you, if that's okay, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, uh, have a few things, if I may. I'd just like to start by, uh, congratulating my colleagues, Mr. McCoy on his reelection. Uh, Mr. Loud, congratulations to you, and, uh, to our new Chair, congratulations, and to all three of you. I look forward to working with you, along with Mr. Kyra, and hopefully, what will be a positive and productive year. Uh, I want to, uh, thank all the people who participated in the election, those who voted, and then all, also those who were brave enough to put themselves, um, onto the ballot, and I applaud them. So I congratulate all who participated in the election this past Saturday. Um, I'd like to congratulate, uh, and thank the folks from the WOW Organization for putting on another fantastic 5K road race this past weekend. Um, I want to particularly point out, uh, the efforts of Joe Martinolo and the Race Committee, uh, along with Lou, who did an outstanding job. I think they set a record for a number of, uh, participants in the race. I can assure you, when the results come out in the town crier, that I, myself, did not set any records this past weekend, but, uh, I, uh, we very much enjoyed it, it was a great time. I'd like to, uh, just plug two events that are coming up. I'd like to encourage all residents to participate in next Saturday's town, uh, meeting, annual town meeting, beginning at 10:30 at the high school. I hope everyone will come out and participate in the process. And then also, I look forward to, it's a few weeks away, but May 13th is the grand opening of the Yentile, uh, Park, the grand opening. And also worth pointing out that, uh, new signage is on the way, um, that will be going up shortly, but we're really looking forward to the grand opening on the 13th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bendel. Mr. Kyra?
Yeah, I, I too would like to, uh, congratulate, uh, Mr. Loud, Mr. McCoy, on their election, and, uh, and to you, Chairman. Uh, I look forward to working with everybody on the Board, uh, for a productive, uh, productive year. Uh, I didn't, uh, make the WOW, um, road race, I heard it was, uh, well-attended, it was a, an exciting, uh, day out there, but I did attend the, the Little League, uh, grand opening, as, as well as everybody here, the parade, and, uh, it was an outstanding day as well. Kicking off the Little League parade and, uh, that, uh, the kids just looked great out there, and, and, uh, it was an exciting day for them. Just a couple of things that I would like to see, um, going forward, I, I attended the facilities master plan the other day, and was brought up about the Butters Road Bridge, um, and a concern in the Butters Road Bridge in regards to, uh, access to it for fire apparatus, and, right now, it looks like it's a, a pretty, uh, difficult bridge to get over, and I didn't know if that was something that we could look into. The Board seemed to be coming up, and I have, uh, received a few phone calls on that. So, if, if that can be looked into.
Uh, yes, uh, this has been a, unfortunately, an, uh, an issue that's come up periodically over the years, and we will, uh, contact, uh, um, the Mass DOT, um, have them, uh, inspected, and if necessary, take any actions to fortify the, uh, bridge.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, I'll just go in line, I, I want to, uh, echo my colleagues here in, in congratulating Mr. Loud on your victory, and, uh, and you as well, Mr. McCoy. Um, I believe that, uh, we have a, a good group here and can do, uh, good work together, uh, for the benefit of the people of Wilmington. Want to encourage, uh, as, as my colleague Greg just said a moment ago, I want to encourage people to come out on Saturday. I, I think it's gonna be a doggone nice day, um, but, uh, come out and participate in the most, uh, natural and, and pure civic process that's still left in our government, uh, and that's, uh, an open town meeting, where you get to decide, uh, and have your voice heard. Um, and, you know, if, uh, if, if the meeting goes, uh, efficiently, uh, it doesn't have to be an all-day affair. Um, I know that, uh, our town moderator, um, does a very good job and, and keeps, keeps the flow going, so please, I, I encourage people to at least come out in the morning and, and participate in that civic process. So, uh, that's, that's it, and, and thank you, uh, Mr. Bendel, for talking about the, the Yentile Farm Park that will be opening on the 13th. Please mark your calendar for that. Uh, we certainly want to see a, a wide and, uh, large population, uh, of people that will come out and help celebrate that, that grand opening. Um, so again, and thank you again for your faith in me for this year, I, I hope to, to serve you as well. Mr. McCoy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to congratulate you with the unanimous support from the Board of Selectmen on your chairmanship, and once again, all the best wishes to you and your family, and your son's confirmation, I know it's a big thing when you're a Catholic.
Yes.
And, uh, I want to thank the, uh, membership congratulating myself, and I want to congratulate Mr. Loud on his victory, and, uh, you know, looking forward to a good word, work, uh, working on behalf of the, uh, citizens, especially with the Board, and I'd like to take this moment to thank the, uh, 1,481 people that voted for me, and the folks who didn't vote for me. I want to be your Selectman too, and if there's any question at all, feel free to give me a call, I'll have to have a cup of coffee, meet with you, and, uh, you know, just hopefully, uh, you know, uh, we can work things out. And I just, uh, once again, look forward to working with the Board. Once again, Mr. Loud, congratulations, and, congratulations, and thank you, everybody.
Mr. Loud?
I'd like to also thank you, Mr. Mc, thank you, and congratulate Mr. McCoy and Mr. Shampoo on your chairmanship, and I certainly look forward to, uh, working with everyone on- on your chairmanship, and I certainly look forward to working with everyone on this board. Saturday was a learning experience, I've learned every day since Saturday on town government, and I look forward to learning every day and working for everyone in town. I need to thank, since Mike mentioned his numbers, I'm gonna mention my 1,849 people that voted for me, and every vote counts, and please get out there next Saturday, the 29th, to enjoy a great day of government. And I need to thank everyone that supported me, especially my wife, Doreen. She didn't deserve what she went through for the last couple of weeks, but we're gonna try to get past that and move on, but I really appreciate everyone's help, thank you.
Thank you all, Jeff, important dates, please.
Yes, April 26th is brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Once again, on the 29th, brush drop off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. As was noted, April 29th, annual town meeting, high school auditorium starts at 10:30 AM. April 29th is a drug take-back drop-off at the Public Safety Building, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. May 1st through the 5th is curbside collection of yard waste. May 3rd, brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. May 6th, brush drop off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Next meeting of the Board of Selectmen is May 8th, Town Hall, Room 9, 7:00 PM. May 12th is the Good Guy Dinner. May 13th is the Yentile Farm Recreation Facility Open House, 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, ribbon cutting at 10:00 AM. May 20th is the Household Hazardous Waste Day, West Intermediate School Parking Lot, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. May 21st is the Pan-Mass Challenge Kids Bike Ride, Carter Lane, 8:00 AM to noon. May 22nd is, again, another Board of Selectmen's meeting, Town Hall, Room 9, 7:00 PM. And, Mr. Chair, unless there's other business, I would suggest that the board entertain a motion to re-enter executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining strategy with respect to the New England Police Benevolent Association Local 1, in accordance with Massachusetts General Law 38, Section 21, Subsection A, Subsection 3, because discussion of the subject in open session may be detrimental to the town's position in the matter, and then further, for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to pending litigation with respect to the New England Police Benevolent Association Local 13, Town versus Town of Wilmington, Case 01-000506563, in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Subsection 3, because discussion of this subject in open session may have a detrimental impact on the town's position in the matter. Upon completion of the executive session, the board would adjourn the meeting and not re-enter open session.
I would accept a motion to that effect.
So moved as described.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Yes, unanimous, thank you and good night.